Okay, my clock shows two o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get going. I'd like to call the order today's September 27th meeting of the Missoula County Board of County Commissioners. If you'll please join me in saying the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So are there any staff announcements or announcements by the commission? Commissioner Curtis.
If you don't have anything to do this weekend, on Saturday is the Fall Harvest Fest, I think they call it, at Fort Missoula Regional, at the Historical Museum out by Fort Missoula Regional Park. And there's pony rides and food and fun to be had, so please come.
Yeah, thank you for that announcement. So I would encourage everyone, if you haven't done so already, at least while you're exiting the meeting, later on, make sure you're signed in in the back, make sure your cellphones are off, and at the appropriate time, if you want to testify, come on up to the microphone and be sure to hit the button so that the light turns green from red to green, and you'll be good to go. So we have two public hearings today, and you'll have an opportunity to weigh in on those if you so choose later, but at this point in the meeting, if there's anything you would like to speak to that is not on the agenda, come on up to the microphone and please do so. Okay, seeing none. Our current claims list, this is, would be claims received by the commissioners' office from September 6, 2018 through September 18, 2018, is $5,565,575.12. 557.12, thank you. With that correction, we have two public hearings today. The first is on an amendment to the Missoula County Fiscal Year 19 Budget, and we will begin with a staff report by our Chief Financial Officer, Andrew Chorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just when you thought we were done with the budget, we're here again. Following the final budget hearing, the Department of Revenue chose to recertify taxable valuations, which created an issue for us. Why? Because the tax increment district out at the development park out by the airport had expired on July 1, and they did not take those taxes out of the increment, but left it in the increment and didn't pass it on to the taxing agencies. There was some question as to whether half a year would have been included because the tax years start on January 1, not the fiscal year, but they decided to take it out at that point. When the district was created in late 91, the taxable value was only $176,000 at that point in time. Since that point in time, we've generated an additional increment of $2,289,808. So what happened, before certification, we had about $11,500,000 worth of URDs and TIFs within Missoula County. Now it's dropped down to $9,204,000, with that $2,289 coming out and coming into the county coffers. The incremental value of the TIF, the $2,289, is now being classified as newly taxable property and being released to all the taxing jurisdictions within the district. Newly taxable property brought about $540,000 in new revenue that's not been on the tax rolls before. And this is new, truly new revenue. This is not taxes because your, the value of your home has gone up. These are taxes that have never been on the tax rolls before. The county's mill values all went up, and the mill value requirements as a result went down. What we're proposing is to drop the mill's levy increase from 11.07 to 8.65 mills. I would ask that you adopt a resolution amending the Missoula County Budget fiscal year 2018, 2019.
Thank you, Andrew. This is a public hearing. Is there any public comment on the proposed budget amendment for fiscal year 19? Go ahead, Commissioner Curtis.
So Andrew, on a $200,000 house, which there might be three or four of them in the county, what does this mean? Their taxes would be $6 less or something?
It's, you know, without adding all the taxes onto a piece of property, just for the county portion, it's about, you know, $6.10.
Okay. So I guess our question to the public is, is anybody against lowering your taxes a little bit?
Seeing none. I'll go ahead and close. Last chance, anyone want to get up and speak to having your taxes lowered from what was originally proposed? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioner Rowley.
Andrew, do you have the top of your head what the percent increase is? It was going to be 4.88, and now it's 3.?
I believe it's 3.81. Just right around 3% of it is for the new library, and just under 1% is for county operations.
Thank you.
Any other questions or a motion?
Sounds good to me. I would move to adopt the resolution adopting the amended Missoula County Budget for fiscal year 1819.
Moved in second, and any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Thank you, Andrew. So we'll move into our second public hearing, which is a continuance of the public hearing that we opened on June 14 of this year related to a proposed interim or emergency zoning resolution related to cryptocurrency. So Andrew, if you wanted to shift out of your spot, not to kick you out, and we have a staff report from Diana Manetta and Jenny Dixon to bring us up to speed where we are today and what might be in the future going forward.
Okay, I'm going to get us started, and then I'm going to turn it over to Diana, and then I'll finish up. My name is Jenny Dixon, and I'm a planner at Community and Planning Services, and this is a public hearing on the topic of cryptocurrency mining and its impacts in Missoula County. So just to recap, the county commissioners held their first public hearing in June of this year, on June 14. The primary purpose of that hearing was to take testimony on cryptocurrency mining and its potential impacts, which could be detrimental to public health and safety. At that time, staff had forwarded an interim zoning proposal to the commissioners for the public's review for consideration at that hearing, and that interim zoning proposal was essentially a moratorium on any new or expanded cryptocurrency mining operations, either as a primary use, like a large facility, or as what we call an accessory use, which is where somebody at their home is just doing this out of their garage or their basement. It did not affect existing operations in Missoula County as proposed in the interim zoning in June. It would have been effective for a period of up to one year. That was going to give the county time to investigate the impacts that we had, that had been identified as causing some potential public health and safety impacts, and we needed time through the interim zoning to determine how best to manage those adverse impacts. Those impacts that we had identified included at least five possible impacts, excessive energy consumption and climate change impacts, e-waste, noise, fire safety, and energy rate The oral testimony received at that hearing and written comment included in the packet at that time convinced the commissioners that more time was needed to consider if interim zoning was appropriate. The second public hearing was scheduled to be held on August 9. Many of you may recall that. However, time was needed to research issues that were raised at the first hearing, as well as time to brief the commissioners on pertinent information related to blockchain data centers and its relationship to cryptocurrency mining. So this is actually the second public hearing on this topic, and after some explanation by Diana on blockchain, staff will be presenting several options to investigate alternatives to mitigate those impacts that I just mentioned, generated by this use and potentially other uses that may generate the same type of impact. So I'm going to turn it over to Diana to talk about blockchain and data centers and crypto mining.
For the record, my name is Diana Manetta. I am Energy Conservation and Sustainability Coordinator for the County and Community and Planning Services, and I will be, over the next few minutes, presenting some information addressing a couple of the issues that came up at the last public hearing and in public comment over the last several months, and these are issues related to the relationship between cryptocurrency mining operations, the blockchain, and data centers more broadly. So these are the two questions specifically that I will be addressing that have been raised. One is, what's the relationship between cryptocurrency mining operations and blockchain processing? Specifically, do cryptocurrency mining operations have a potentially broad application to all types of blockchain processing? And then the other question is whether there are differences between cryptocurrency mining operations and traditional data centers like a Facebook or a Google data center, and if so, what those differences are. So starting with the first question, the first blockchain was developed in 2009 for cryptocurrency, specifically for Bitcoin, the first cryptocurrency. There are now more than 1,000 cryptocurrencies. They all have their own blockchains, so there's not just one blockchain. That's an important point to understand, there are multiple blockchains. There are also a lot of industries beyond cryptocurrency that are very interested in the possibility of using blockchain technology. There are a lot of pilot projects going on. This is a partial list of some of the industries that are looking at this. For example, just this week, Walmart announced that they'll be requiring suppliers of leafy greens like lettuce and spinach to use a blockchain that IBM has developed for food supply chains. And the advantage of this, from Walmart's perspective, is that in the case of an E. coli breakout, for example, they would be able to use that blockchain to immediately trace that lettuce back to the farmer it was grown, versus apparently the system they have today, it can take days or even weeks for them to trace that back. So the question, to kind of rephrase the question I posed on the previous slide, is will all of these types of blockchain applications rely on the kind of processing that happens at cryptocurrency mining operations? And to answer that question, I want to take a step back to what a blockchain is. A blockchain is a distributed ledger, a ledger meaning a list of entries or transactions, and distributed meaning it's not held by one central entity like a government or a bank, it's held by multiple people or organizations. So new transactions or entries are grouped together into blocks. Those blocks are broadcast to the participants in the network, who must approve that those transactions are valid, or a majority of them must approve that, at which point the block can be added to the blockchain. When it's added, it's linked together with the block before it in such a way that if you were to go back and change a transaction in a block, that would be immediately obvious because it wouldn't fit anymore with the blocks before and after it. And so for this reason, a blockchain is sometimes referred to as an immutable ledger, in addition to a distributed ledger, immutable meaning unchangeable. So I want to draw your attention for a second to step four, where those in the network approve that the transaction is valid. This is a hard thing to do. How do you achieve this, especially when your network is huge, it's anonymous people who could be anywhere in the world with the Bitcoin blockchain, for example? How do you accomplish this approving the transaction is valid? So how that's done is through something called a consensus mechanism. And there's more than one type of consensus mechanism. This slide compares a couple of them. The first consensus mechanism that was developed and the one that Bitcoin uses is called proof of work. In a proof-of-work blockchain, participants compete to solve complex mathematical puzzles that are associated with each block. Whoever solves the puzzle first gets to add that block to the blockchain and is rewarded with newly issued units of cryptocurrency. And for that reason, this process is called mining, because it's the way that new currency enters the system. Now it's important to note about these mathematical puzzles that they can only be solved by brute force, by computers doing lots and lots of calculations, almost like random number generating. The value of them is in requiring participants to prove that they have some skin in this game. They've invested money in the form of computational power and electricity in order to participate in verifying transactions. So that's proof of work. There are alternatives to that as a consensus mechanism, though. The one that is most widely used as an alternative is called proof of stake. In proof of stake, the participant that's selected to add the next block to the blockchain is not selected based on any kind of mathematical calculations. They're selected based on their ownership of that particular cryptocurrency, their stake in that particular cryptocurrency. So there isn't all of these mathematical calculations going on, there's negligible computational power required in a blockchain that uses proof of work compared to, I'm sorry, that uses proof of stake compared to proof of work. So on the left and the right of the slide there, I've included a few examples of cryptocurrencies that use proof of work versus proof of stake. There are many others because there are hundreds of cryptocurrencies, but these are a few of the more well-known examples. And it's interesting to note that Ethereum, which is the second-largest cryptocurrency after Bitcoin, based on market capitalization, they currently use proof of work for that system, but the developers of Ethereum have stated their intention to transition to proof of stake, due in part to the excessive energy consumption associated with the proof-of-work system. And that quote at the bottom of the screen is getting at this point from the developers of Ethereum. So cryptocurrency mining operations are doing proof of work. They're computers that are doing these complex mathematical calculations that are required to maintain a proof-of-work-based blockchain. They're not involved in proof-of-stake-based blockchains. So that's one important distinction to understand. There's another distinction that I want to draw as well, and that's between public blockchains versus private or permissioned blockchains. So all of the blockchains I've been talking about so far have been public, like Bitcoin. These are the blockchains that anybody can view, anybody can add transactions to them if you want to, anybody can participate in verifying transactions, for example, as a minor. But not all blockchains are like this. There are private or permissioned blockchains that are still a distributed ledger, but they're not distributed quite so broadly. You need permission to participate, and you could have different kinds of permissions to view the blockchain, to add transactions to the blockchain, and to verify those transactions. This particular graphic comes from Financial Times, and so it's talking about the banking industry, and you can see it says, I don't know if you can see, if you have good eyes, you can see on the bottom of that right-hand graphic, it says that a private or permissioned blockchain is the preferred option of most banks. Now, private or permissioned blockchains don't require a complex consensus mechanism like proof of work or proof of stake, because the participants are known and have permission to be part of this network. There's no proof of work involved, and so there's no mining involved in these systems. This is another example of a permissioned blockchain in a vehicle leasing network, where the entities that are sharing this blockchain, which is a record of the asset transfer in this case, are people involved in this, in the supply chain, the manufacturer, the dealer, the leasing company, et cetera. You could make a similar graphic for Walmart and their leafy greens, where the participants would be the farmer, the company that packages the greens, the distributor, the trucking company, et cetera. So some people ask sometimes, so what's the advantage of that over just like a shared online database that they can all log into and view, like a Google, shared Google Drive kind of a thing? So one difference is this is still a blockchain, meaning it's still an immutable ledger. Those entries are still linked together in that special blockchain way that I mentioned earlier, so that you can't go back like you can in a Google document and just make that change. It has that extra layer of security. So looking forward, the question is, of all the industries looking at blockchain and interested in blockchain, which are likely to adopt a public blockchain versus a private or a permissioned blockchain? You know, this is such a rapidly evolving industry, I don't think anybody has that crystal ball to see the future here. But if we look at what some tech companies and researchers on this topic have to say, there seems to be general agreement that at least for business applications, we're likely to see private or permissioned blockchains. At least for now, this seems to be what they're looking at, and these are just a few quotes that address that topic. So this table summarizes the information I've presented on the last few slides. It compares public blockchains to private or permissioned blockchains. And specifically right there is where cryptocurrency mining operations fit into this broader blockchain universe. They're necessary to support proof-of-work-based public blockchains. They're not involved in proof-of-stake-based blockchains or in private or permissioned blockchains. And so just circling back to that initial question, do cryptocurrency mining operations have a potentially broad application to all types of blockchain processing? The answer is no, their application is specific to public proof-of-work-based blockchain processing. And then finally, to get to the second question that I posed at the beginning, is there, are there differences between cryptocurrency mining operations and traditional data centers, like Facebook, for example? These were publicly available photos of a cryptocurrency mining operation in Washington State on the left, and some photos of the Facebook Data Center in Prineville, Oregon on the right. And there are physical differences between the two types of facilities resulting from their different functions. So cryptocurrency mining operations are racks of computers that are doing this proof of work. They're running these complex mathematical calculations, they're processing data at a high rate of speed. They're not storing any data, and that's what distinguishes them mainly from a data center. So because they're not storing data, they have less need for security and reliability. They often have more of a lightweight building envelope, using a warehouse or a storage facility or something like that. They tend to have less redundancy in their cooling systems and electrical systems. They often have open utility-style shelving, like you can see in the photo there, as opposed to enclosed cabinets to better control the airflow over and through the equipment. And then power density is a question that is a little bit harder to get a handle on. There's not much data available, but some sources suggest that cryptocurrency mining operations can have a much higher power density than data centers, meaning the electricity used per square foot of the facility. So I hope this information has been helpful to address some of the questions that have come up over the past few months regarding this industry. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Jenny to talk about options for the county moving forward.
Again, this is Jenny Dixon, Community and Planning Services, and as explained, the option that we presented to the commissioners earlier this summer included a county-wide temporary moratorium on primary and accessory-use cryptocurrency mining operations, as some other cities in the US, particularly the Northwest, have done and are currently in the middle of. At the June public hearing, public comments suggested an alternative to the commission that would consider addressing impacts of concern rather than the crypto-mining industry itself. Those, most, those concerns most frequently cited are the energy consumption of a proof-of-work, permissionless, public blockchain, potential noise generated by the equipment that you saw slides of, as well as impact on electrical rates and e-waste disposal. Those are some impacts that the county could choose to address specifically rather than one particular industry. The county has received so far 80 written comments, and that is from 71 individual commenters. Some people submitted more than one comment. So 65 or 92% of those comments were in support of a moratorium, either explicitly or strongly implied, and also felt that the impacts generated by this industry should be addressed by the county. Two comments, or 3%, were in opposition to a moratorium on cryptocurrency mining, and four comments, or 6%, fall into a category of other or unclear. Many people mentioned one or more of the concerns, the impacts that I listed, and other impacts that were also raised as concerns include fire safety, impacts on property values, and lack of job creation. Those came up often, but not as much as the other concerns. While the identified impacts of concern of this industry are significant, regulations addressing impacts of concern by all types of commercial and industrial uses allow the county to ensure that mitigations fairly address these impacts across the board. Therefore, staff is presenting a second option, Option 2, to the commission, with a recommendation to consider, if regulations would be developed and adopted by the county to target these impacts of concern, they would also be applied uniformly to all industries rather than just one in particular. A possible consequence of choosing Option 2, however, is the absence of a stopgap measure that the interim zoning provided, which is the interim zoning placed a temporary moratorium that would have prevented any new cryptocurrency mining operations from being put into place. However, Option 2 will not prohibit those new cryptocurrency mining operations from establishing facilities during that time and would need to then comply at a later date if regulations were adopted. If the commissioners choose Option 2, I would suggest also a motion perhaps to table the proposed interim zoning indefinitely, to allow staff time to investigate development of regulations to target those impacts of concern. So what we're looking for is, today is potentially a recommendation from the commissioners choosing either Option 1 or 2, or if there is a third option, as well as potentially tabling the interim zoning at this time if you don't choose Option 1. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jenny and Diana. So this is a continuation of our June 14 public hearing that we opened, so if folks would like to comment on either Option 1 or Option 2 that are before us, or anything else bearing on this discussion, please queue up to the mic there. Ask that folks be respectful of others' time, and try to limit your comments to three minutes or less, and also try to be respectful of differing opinions. Mr. Caldwell? Could you hit the button on the microphone?
There you go, thank you. My name is Bert Caldwell. I live in Chumraw Loop, which is between Bonner and Turo, and I'm currently the chairman of the Bonner Mill Town Council. I have trouble reading this. I left my papers on the table at home, so if you'll bear with me a little bit. I joined the council back when, early in Steve and Mike's renovation of the mill property, and they have beautified and practically rebuilt Bonner, in addition to bringing new life to the mill. And so for that, I wanted to publicly thank them beyond what we say in the Bonner Council. However, as we pointed out, cryptocurrency operation is today's topic and not the Bonner development. Steve and Mike have attended many, many council meetings and have taken the brunt of most of the complaints. The Bonner Mill Town Council, along with many members of our community, have also spent well over a year listening to the complaints and wading through the slow process of defining the problem and working toward a solution. In the first part of this meeting in June, someone stated that it was just not fair to be changing the rules after a company built a business that complied with the existing regulations and policies. My first response, as some of you might know, would be a bit short on that, but it would have been that life is not necessarily fair, and that's simply not an argument. But after I thought about it for a more serious response, I say that what isn't acceptable or fair was to introduce a very disrupting noise to a quiet community and say simply, "We're in compliance." Thankfully, BDP and Hyperblock, previously known as Project Spokane, have not done that. They've been what we consider good, considerate, and responsive Bonner citizens, and I applaud them for that. It must be acknowledged that in every new business, every new product, and it went away, and every new industry, incurs unexpected complications and unintended consequences, and Bonner noise definitely fits into this category. While the first group of new fan blades installed have already provided noticeable relief, and hopefully enough to satisfy those who have recently been driven to distraction, the county commissioners have the responsibility to acknowledge a new, heretofore unexperienced problem, and attempt to mitigate it going forward, and retroactively if necessary, so others don't suffer the same data, the same fate, sorry, and spend a year or more, as Bonner has, looking for a solution. I very much support this effort and sincerely hope that rational and reasonable policy results. Thank you.
Thank you, Bert. Come on up. Come on up.
Hi, everybody. This is on.
It is on, yes.
Hi, I'm Michael Fradman. I am an IT engineer for a local company. I wanted to speak about a few things that I think everyone should know about, not only blockchain, but the tech industry in Missoula. I've been here for about eight years, and I've seen many technology firms come here. I know we've had recent news broadcast about a firm that purchased a large or renting a large space in the First Interstate Building, and we have several other large technology firms that have or are looking to make their way towards our city and county. I think it is a mistake to restrict zoning on a tech firm, not just, I think it sets a bad precedent for other tech companies that are looking to make their way here to Missoula. I definitely agree that investigations could be done into the impact in our area and that it wouldn't hurt to just know what the results of those things are, but to outright block expansion, especially if someone, I think it was you, Jenny, that said that this may affect people who want to crypto-mine in their own homes as well? Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
I think that would be a mistake, too. As someone who tinkers around with that as a hobby, it blocks people having that hobby, which I'm not sure where I was really going with, to be honest. But I don't think it's a great idea to just completely block it, even if it's a temporary thing. I think we should just let it grow for right now. I don't think it's been growing out of control. And again, I do support the investigation of the impacts, and that's about it.
Okay. Thank you. Additional public comment. Come on up.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Lori Bush. I am concerned about environmental impacts of the decisions that we're making now, that far too often we don't have enough enforcement, opportunities for employees to go out and actually take a look at what's actually going on rather than trusting the on-our system. Far too often, with many of the regulations that we already have on the books, there is no enforcement. And I support the first option because that is temporary. It still allows for time to actually investigate the potential and the potential solutions as well. The second one, where it says investigate development of regulations to target impacts of concern, very general, created by various types of commercial and industrial uses. We're talking about high-volume energy consumption that does impact the environment globally. And if we are to back off and back away from this excessive use of energy, we need to know how we can do that reasonably with the industries that we already have, rather than letting new industries flourish, explode, run rampant. It's easier to delineate growth at a slower pace than to pull it back after it's already occurred because there is no enforcement. We have regulations, but once again, they're just suggestions if there's no one who is actually capable of going out and finding out what really is happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. Mr. Bender.
Good afternoon. Bruce Bender, 365 Kensington. I'm representing 350 Montana, which is a climate action group here based in Missoula. 350 Montana works to reduce atmospheric carbon by ending fossil fuel burning with the greatest urgency. This urgency is only reinforced by the effects we're currently experiencing with climate change, the more frequent extreme events of droughts, wildfires, floods, and hurricanes. This urgency calls for a rapid conversion to 100% renewable energy systems using wind and solar. 350's main objective currently is to advocate the use of 100% renewable energies by Northwest Energy, who is currently updating their procurement plan for electrical generation as they convert from coal. They are currently looking at using gas-powered plant generation, and we are encouraging renewables. But clearly, the part of strategy for conversion to renewable energies is reducing the need for electricity by improving efficiencies of all users. Cryptocurrency, I'm going to use Bitcoin because it's easier for me to say, mining is oppositional to that concept of efficiency. In fact, their growth only lands to an exponential need for more electricity. The more users of Bitcoin mining, the more complex computer calculations required, and with it, increased electrical use. As the Guardian paper states, "In simplified terms, Bitcoin mining is a competition to waste the most electricity possible by doing pointless arithmetic cantillions of times a second." One statistic says the current world use of electricity by this mining aspect is comparable to use by nations such as large as Ireland or New Zealand, and that's probably growing. And of course, the problem that I'm concerned about is that this Northwest region of the U.S. has a less expensive electrical energy, because you'd say, "Why are they coming here?" But it's also the climate. It's a cooler climate. As you may know, Iceland is one of the larger areas that has this type of use. So it's ideal for the environment for this business. But the Bitcoin mining potential growth in electrical demand has potential escalating impacts on the global warming pollution from electrical generation. Could electrical demand encourage the continued operation of the air-polluting coal plants that are now scheduled for closing that coal strip? Could the Northwest Energy use this electrical market growth to justify going to natural gas plants and other fossil fuels rather than going to renewables? The Politico magazine article about East Wenatchee that you had on your website I found very interesting. It's a warning to all communities about the effects of this very speculative operation. We Montana should be aware of any businesses use the term "mining" in its description. Cryptocurrency mining has similar traits to our history of mineral mining, speculative markets, unregulated users, abandoned waste in businesses, and variable employment. So on behalf of 350 Montana, I encourage you to use whatever legal authority you have to curtail the growth of this wasteful and impact of industry, the cryptocurrency mining, and certainly support Option 1. Minimally, as you look at regulations, require that its electricity has to come from renewables such as wind or solar and not use our existing hydroenergy, as I think is being proposed by one, nor allow them to use any fossil fuel generation of electricity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bender. Additional public comment.
My name is Gary Matson. I am president of Bonner Milltown West Riverside specifically. I want to begin by thanking Diana for the wonderful presentation and hope that I can find some information online to get copies of it because it's very helpful. And I also want to begin by commenting on what Steve and Mike have done in Bonner Milltown. We love what they've done out there, and I just wish I could love everything they do out there, and I love 95% of it. So my comments today are about the other 5% in cryptocurrency mining. And I've also met the folks from Project Spokane who have showed up at our council meetings, and they've been fun to be around, nice people. So this is not about people, it's about projects. And I strongly support an indefinite moratorium on cryptocurrency operations in Missoula County, and here's why. The electrical energy consumed by these facilities is obscenely excessive. For example, the Project Spokane operation in Bonner consumes 5 megawatts of energy while providing only 20 to 25 jobs. It would take 2 and 1/2 Milltown dams to provide the energy for Project Spokane. According to a story by, Missoula News story by Kim Brigeman, "The computer power it takes to create one Bitcoin consumes at least as much electricity as the average American household burns through in two years." This is a New York Times story reported under the headline, "There's Nothing Virtual About Bitcoin's Energy Appetite." "Each day, it takes as much power to run the worldwide Bitcoin network as some medium-sized countries," the Times said, citing Morgan Stanley economist Alex De Vries, who track energy use in the industry. "The consequence of excessive energy consumption is an unacceptable carbon footprint increase." Although Project Spokane's operators state that their energy comes from renewable hydro sources, the removal of this renewable power from the energy pool creates additional demand for new generation sources. Northwestern Energy Current proposes that these new sources be powered by fossil fuel, which is going to add additional to our CO2 footprint. There is a worldwide scientific consensus that man is causing climate change. NASA's Climate Change Section, that you can find on the internet, or you can find almost everything these days, says, "Multiple studies published in peer-reviewed scientific journals show that 97% or more of actively publishing climate scientists agree. Climate warming trends over the past century are extremely likely due to human activities." In addition, most of the leading scientific organizations worldwide have issued public statements endorsing this position. Missoula County has an opportunity to lead in the recognition of anthropogenic climate change at a time when much of our corporate and political leadership is denying or overlooking human contributions. And I have total sympathy with industrial developers who are trying to make their development pay, and they don't have time to look at climate change science, and very few people, I'm afraid, in leadership positions do. But Missoula County can. Bitcoin miners justify their operations partly on the basis of the potential future benefits of blockchain technology. Even though such applications may develop and may have broad application within our national economy, there's currently too excessive in energy consumption to offer any true benefit to our society as a whole. The overall social and environmental effect of cryptocurrency mining is negative in the extreme. Missoula County could help minimize our collective carbon footprint by establishing any energy standard for new commerce and industry within the county. For example, there could be tax benefits or other benefits provided to new commercial buildings that may lead standards, and maybe this is already done.
And Gary, you're about four minutes now, so.
What's that?
You're about four minutes, so if you could start to wrap up.
Half a paragraph left.
Okay. Thank you.
And benefits could also be provided to industries that employ more people while using less energy. And as a final thought, we can live without blockchain, but we can't live without a planet. Thanks.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I actually have a one-page handout, if I may.
Sure.
I'm the Clean Energy Program Director at the Montana Environmental Information Center based in Helena. I'm here to support passing a one-year moratorium because it's a prudent step to take here. And in addition to the concerns about noise and electronic waste and whether these projects fit with the county's growth policy, which states that the county should consider the impacts to climate change when making policy and regulatory decisions, there are real questions to be asked here about the impact of these energy-intensive facilities on electricity rates for county residents and businesses that get their electricity from Missoula Electric Co-op or Northwestern Energy. For example, in Plattsburgh, New York, there were reports of residential electric bills going up $100 to $200 per month because cryptocurrency operations had flooded in and soaked up all the cheap hydropower in the region. And Missoula is in a very similar situation with low-cost hydropower. It's one of the prime reasons these facilities are looking to locate here. The American Public Power Association, which represents co-op electric utilities around the country, wrote earlier this year that, quote, "The transitory nature of the currency phenomenon makes it difficult, if not all but impossible, to plan for the substantial increase in energy use and the strain on the distribution system to handle a load that literally might be here one day and gone the next." Flathead Electric Co-op, to our north, laid out their cost concerns when they passed a six-month moratorium on cryptocurrency facilities earlier this year, and they have since extended that another six months. And that is the handout that I passed out, and it lays out their concerns, noting that the significant power requirement of the potential load requests could use up capacity that Flathead Electric has already reserved for serving traditional growth levels, and that the loads are mobile and very transient, potentially stranding costs to other cooperative members if they leave prematurely, and that the rapid growth in electricity demand could ultimately pose a reliability and safety risk to the cooperative's electric distribution system. So I would urge the commission to send a letter to Missoula Electric Co-op, as well as Northwestern Energy, to ask if they share these concerns and what steps they are taking to protect against spikes in electricity rates and/or having stranded, unfunded grid infrastructure because of cryptocurrency operations. And perhaps they are already addressing this issue. I do not know, but it is worth asking the questions and seeking some answers. There's significant uncertainty, is what we do know. And that uncertainty is just another reason that passing a temporary moratorium is a prudent step to take at this time so that the county will have all the information it needs to make a good decision. And I would specifically propose as well that during that time, the county could consider requiring cryptocurrency facilities to obtain a letter or some other certification from the co-op or Northwestern stating that the facilities will not cause rates to go up for other ratepayers, and it will not create significant risk of stranded assets. This certification could be required in order for these facilities to operate in the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Sean Cooper. I'm the COO of a company called Forge X. We are currently moving into and taking over the Smurfit Stone facility in Frenchtown. And I'm here to talk to you guys about a lot of things, specifically about cryptocurrency Bitcoin. I just wanted to make a quick comment that I found online on Twitter by an Andre Antonopoulos, who is a very big proponent of cryptocurrency. And he says, "Immutability is not a waste of energy. Christmas lights are." So I just want to kind of start with that. Well, no one can argue that Bitcoin and other altcoins mining consumption consumes a lot of energy in absolute numbers. Given that you need to run a network of a few hundred, a thousand, of very powerful computers at all times, the right way to look at the problem is not about the total consumption, but to compare of how efficient Bitcoin is relative to the alternatives traditionally centralized systems use. However, the only comparison that seems to be always popping up anywhere and everywhere is against banking, Visa transaction costs. As expected, Visa looks like way more efficient, which adds to the rhetoric that Bitcoin is a very inefficient system, and it's just the Ponzi scheme that pollutes the world. In my view, this comparison is flawed. It is not comparing apples to apples. Besides the fact that Bitcoin is not simply a piece of payment network like the Visa is currently, Visa itself requires a banking system for payments to work. So you're basically requiring Visa and the banking. So take a quick look at Visa transactions. You have your credit card, your card. You're going to swipe the card. So there's power that has to be used there. You have your phone and your Alpay's and your iPhones, and you have the Android, you know, Samsung Smart Pay, et cetera. So you're using power right there. The moment that somebody swipes their card, that process starts. You start sending your info- know, Samsung Smart Pay, et cetera. So you're using power right there. The moment that somebody swipes their card, that process starts. You start sending your information out to a front-end processor. The front-end processor then takes your information and sends it to the representative bank, and the bank validates the information is correct, and you have credit or balance. Finally, it's time for the transaction to flow back to the bank, the processor, to the credit card association, to the front-end processor, or the merchant that is acquiring your banking information. By now, your credit card information has crossed over several databases, and several out of which are not even Visas. Sorry, someone... So we have seen above just comparing the Visa transaction costs with Bitcoin costs is not a fair comparison. So now, let's estimate how much electricity the traditional banking system consumes. This is not an easy thing to do, to calculate, because there's just not enough information. First, let's look at how many banks are out there. After doing a bit of research on Google, Internet, Bing, et cetera, it seems that no one knows exactly how many banks are out there in the world, and you can get different estimates ranging from 14,500 to 25,000, and even more than 60,000 quasi-banking associations that are almost as rigorously regulated as banks. So for the purpose of this calculation, let's just pull in the middle at 30,000. Now we need to estimate how much electricity banks consume. For that purpose, I'll just compare three values: server costs, branch costs, and ATM costs. Of course, banks and their employees and everything else cost more electricity, but we won't even get into that right now. The numbers that we need to add in the mix are how many servers each bank is using to run their banking infrastructure. Pick a very conservative number, on an average of 100 servers per bank. Keep in mind that banks need servers just for their infrastructure, but for websites, for ERP, for CRM, for accounting information, for internal purposes as well. If a server is an average-consuming 400 watt hours since it's always on, that means that the bank consumes a total of 800 megawatt hours a year. Let's add the mix of the electricity consumption to the branches. According to the World Bank, there are 12.5 branches per 100,000 adults in the world. So if the world population is 7.6 billion people, and we have around 70% of those are adults, that means there are a total of 65, 665,000 branches or so. Only in the U.S. appears to be close to 100,000 branches, and assuming the U.S. is around 15% of less of the entire banking system worldwide, you get around the same number.
Mr. Cooper, you're starting to run a little long, so if you could start to wrap up.
Wrap up really quickly here. So Bitcoin's annual consumption is about 28.6 terawatts, while the banking system's average power consumption is about 100 terawatts a year. So if you're just looking at efficiency standpoints, Bitcoin is more efficient. Even if only 30% of the bank's electricity consumption is comparable to the part of Bitcoin, that would still make Bitcoin more efficient. So again, I close with miners and the equipment that are coming out now are becoming more efficient, more over time. The S9 is two and a half times more efficient than the S7 that was out a couple of years ago, and we're just going to keep growing. So again, I think that we should really stop complaining about Bitcoin and start complaining about Christmas lights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Hi, I'm Jerry Dellis, and I am a Frenchtown, Montana resident. And Sean's company is going to come to the West Valley Community Council meeting on October 11th to give a presentation. And I would ask that the commissioners take a little bit more time to consider these two options after the October 11th meeting, when they do hear from the residents of Frenchtown via the West Valley Community Council, to take into consideration the ramifications of this operation, as well as the, really, what it could do for our economy and the other things that are relevant to more than a three- to four-minute bit, pardon the pun. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dellis. Additional comment? Come on up.
I didn't have any intention of coming here to speak today, but I just want to throw one thing out for you.
And could you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Elisa Cooper. I'm Sean's spouse, and 12 years ago, I went to work for a small company called Amazon.com. And people used to tell me, "Oh, nobody's going to buy tools on Amazon. Nobody will ever buy clothes online. How could you ever do anything online? It's not safe." And had any regulations happened that stopped that, Seattle wouldn't be the place it is. And I'm not saying that it is good or it is bad the way it is, but to look at a technology or a new industry like that and just say, "Absolutely not. We think it's going to ruin the environment," I don't think is the correct method to approach it. How many of you fly on an aircraft? How many of you drive electric cars? You know, the batteries from the electric cars are highly toxic. But unless we're given the opportunity to explore alternatives, then we'll never find those alternatives, because I am a huge environmentalist myself. I absolutely agree that we have to do something. But if you're in the crypto business, which I am not, I'm actually in the airline industry now, and I was with Amazon before, but if you start reading a little bit more about the crypto business, they're doing some amazing things. I've seen them heating homes in Iceland. They are creating greenhouses and growing tomatoes along with the technology. And some of the other discussions that have come along are, "How can we power these data centers?" Because ultimately, it's data. Data centers aren't going away. I've seen Microsoft sinking data centers lately, this is all new technology, sinking data centers into the ocean to cool them. And they are also talking about solar panels in order to run some of the data centers. But if you absolutely say absolutely no to cryptocurrency, you don't actually give the opportunity for people to explore what the potential is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Jeremy Drake. I'm with Home Resource. It's a local nonprofit business here in Missoula. My comments directly address option number two. In August, the City of Missoula City Council unanimously adopted a zero-waste plan following the adoption of a zero-waste goal back in 2016. That goal aims to reduce municipal solid waste by 90% by the year 2050, both in volume and toxicity. So the potential impact of e-waste from an operation such as a cryptocurrency mine and any large user of electronics and the associated community and global burden are a concern, which you're already aware. And I understand that based on the written comments, Project Spokane chooses reuse and recycling over landfill disposal of their used hardware. I believe it's in the interest of public health and safety that all potential generators of e-waste, including and especially any future cryptocurrency mining operations, use good practices in upgrading hardware and in disposal of outmoded hardware. While businesses may come and go, toxicity is much less ephemeral and persists in our environment indefinitely. Precedent exists to regulate disposal of toxic waste streams, including e-waste, at the county level. They're all across the country, both domestically, the mainland, also in Hawaii. So lack of statewide leadership on this issue should not necessarily be a barrier. And has been noted today, one potential barrier could be the question of enforcement, which would come with any new regulation. I imagine a high-density operation such as a cryptocurrency mine may be relatively easy target for enforcement, so that may not be such a barrier. Finally, I see that there is potential opportunity in the larger community for the proper reuse and recycling of toxic waste streams such as e-waste that can help promote green businesses, also help move Missoula specifically, the city, and hopefully more maybe the county and other places in the region toward zero waste. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drake. Additional comment?
Hi, my name's John Langstaff. I'm a resident of the Grant Creek neighborhood. Recently, we had a neighborhood meeting, and one of the advocates for bit-currency mining came in and enlightened us as to how they were going to bring such a wonderful company to our neighborhood. And personally, I don't see how bit currencies are going to benefit us. Are we going to be a better community because of a bunch of algorithms? I think not. Are we going to have more jobs? In a very small sense, maybe, but for all the expenditure of electricity and conflict that it's going to cause, not worth it. Is it going to bring tourists? I doubt if anybody wants to go see a crypto-mining operation. And I certainly wouldn't want to drop it. And, you know, we have several service businesses at the bottom of Grant Creek, which include a couple of motels, and those people don't want to listen to any crypto-mining clattering going on down there. I don't see how the expenditure of energy in this false coinage is going to benefit anyone either. Algorithms, come on. That's not going to make a difference in the quality of our life. I would like to see our energies and our businesses help people, not help Bitcoin miners in their pseudo-universe to make money off of the electricity that we are all trying to benefit from. It's not going to happen when you give it to Bitcoin creators. That's wasted energy, as far as I'm concerned. That's all I have, and I just think that we can find better businesses to promote Missoula than a Bitcoin industry. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy?
Good afternoon. My name is Amy Sillenberg, and I just wanted to, one, thank the commissioners for, again, hearing public comment on this really important issue that's really, again, sort of a challenging one to understand. And I also really want to thank Jenny and Diana for that really informative educational presentations. I think we're all trying to get our head around what this means and how this kind of industry both fits our community, the larger county, and our stated goals and things like growth policies and things. So I did comment at the June public hearing, and I don't want to repeat those, but I just wanted to follow up on a couple of things since June. One, I really appreciated hearing from Mr. Drake about the zero-waste plan, that really it's for Missoula, but the larger community and the county. We all have a lot to learn about how we can reduce waste, and the toxicity with e-waste, I think, is another reason that we just need to put the brakes on and hold and figure out the best mechanisms to ensure that we have the right standards. In Montana, we do not, we are the only state in the whole country that has no regulations around waste, and I thought that was really fascinating. And it's, we can set some standards that just ensure that people are doing the things that it sounds like one company already is, but those need to be standards that are set in place. And I guess, oh, sorry, I forgot to mention at the beginning that I do run Climate Smart Missoula, a local nonprofit, and we're interested in climate and energy, but waste is part of that. It has a pretty big energy burden when you look at greenhouse gas emissions. So that's why I wanted to speak to the zero-waste. And then finally, with energy, I don't want to repeat the things that Mr. Bender, Mr. Mattson, Mr. Fady, and now Mr. Langstaff has also mentioned about the significance of that incredible energy burden. I just think that if it is either one or two, the options on the table, I would encourage you to choose one and go with it. I'm clearly more interested in a moratorium so we can figure this out. But it's been interesting to learn about how other counties and other states have approached this, where they have looked at a burden of energy and how that might affect other ratepayers, some of the concerns that Brian Fady raised, and it said, "Hey, we can actually do something with this. We can charge, we could tax a building, we could charge a different rate, we could encourage renewable energy." There are options out there to kind of help level the playing field in terms of the pollution burden that's being put forward. And I just think that there, we need to figure this out, and we need to figure it out pretty quickly. So I would encourage, depending where you want to go, option one or two, but know that a group like Climate Smart, who looks a lot of energy issues, and some of the other folks in our community, are willing to work with you to help find some of those best practices that other people, communities around the country have used and move those forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sillenberg. Additional public comment? Come on up. I know there's got to be someone. Oh, here we go.
Steve MacArthur, and I'm a member of 350 and also on the board of the Genetic and Peace Center. I'm here speaking as an individual today in support of your taking time to consider the impact of no regulation. Because we are kind of an energy reservation here in Montana, I think the future is going to be greatly impacted by the way you approach regulation and/or restrictions. One thought that I had that has not been aired this afternoon is that you basically couple any Bitcoin mining or additional use for energy to renewable energies, that you basically ask them to have solar panels and/or wind energy put into the mix, so that we don't basically do a backdoor, around-the-corner kind of way of keeping coal strip beyond its really usable period of time, because we all know that the coal pollution and the heavy metals that are expended into the atmosphere will be impacting our children and our children's children in the future. And so I'm concerned that without some appropriate regulation, not to determine who wins and who doesn't win in terms of economic activity in this community, but that you basically level the playing field with some restrictions around additional energy use and couple them with a commitment toward renewables so that we can meet our standards of a healthier environment for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. MacArthur.
My name is Jamie Bowditch. I'm an attorney with the Boone Carlberg Law Firm. I did testify at the June 14th hearing. I try not to repeat that sin-lating testimony that I provided, but did want to mention that I do represent, as one of my clients, Project Spokane, now known as HyperBlock. I also wanted to commend Diana and Jenny for the presentation. It's, this technology is very difficult to understand. It's even harder to explain, and I think the presentation they provided was very informative and very well done. I guess what I want to say is this: I appreciate a lot of the concerns that have been expressed at the two public comments, but a lot of those concerns are at the macro level. And, you know, I think, I also appreciate the difference in opinion as to whether or not cryptocurrency mining and blockchain technology has any societal benefit. But when we're talking about the options, and we're specifically talking about interim zoning, that is not the analysis that you have the ability or legal right to make. What you have to do is you have to look and determine whether there are facts which require you to address an emergency, and specifically something that affects the public health, safety morals, or personal welfare. And I don't want to tell you what staff has decided, but my implication, based on the information that was provided today, is that there has not been anything identified which requires the adoption of any interim zoning to date, because there's no emergency that exists to be addressed. Arguably, there was the sound, which definitely created some issues, but I think, you know, that my client, and Steve and Mike, took it upon themselves to try to address that without any need for any regulation, just as trying to be good corporate and community citizens. So I think what we need here is an effective and well-reasoned process at determining and investigating whether regulations are appropriate. I also believe that some of the most effective regulations that have been enacted typically are ones that involve all stakeholders, and I think sometimes meeting with and consulting with people who have vast knowledge in the industry about some of the way that regulation can be done, that doesn't have a detrimental effect on the economic status of the community, is a great option. And for that reason, I am strongly opposed to the adoption of interim zoning, and don't think really that there has been any... think really that there has been any facts identified, or at least presented, that would justify that legal course of action. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Yep, got a couple folks. Come on up.
Hi, my name's Steve Loken. I have a construction company here in Missoula that does energy conservation, it does retrofits, does passive house, super insulation. I've done a lot of training of other architects, builders, and engineers in the Pacific Northwest for the Bonneville Power Administration, and followed the development of the Power Planning Council, Bonneville Power Administration's Power Planning Council 30 years ago, to initiate aggressive conservation measures in the Pacific Northwest, knowing that those aggressive conservation measures for the Bonneville Power Administration and all the public and private utility companies that are connected to them to save energy. And the last time I met with Bonneville Power Administration, they said they could meet the growth projections for energy consumption in the Pacific Northwest for the next five years with conservation measures. So I find it interesting, and I'm, just as a layman, I'm trying to wrap my brain around the fact that I come from a background where everybody has or should have equitable distribution of resources. So if all of us in this room had a light bulb under our chair and a big extension cord, so at night, each of us had a light bulb, and then somebody comes in the room and they have a huge spotlight that dims everybody else's light bulbs, to me, that doesn't seem like a fair and equitable distribution of resources. And when I try to wrap my brain around what Bitcoin is and what it does for a small handful of people who are extra wealthy, and they diminish the resources, and they diminish the social and economic justice for everybody else that lives in this part of the country, there's a fairness doctrine. I don't think it can be regulated. I don't think it can be, you know, dealt with with codes and regulations, though I'd love to see that. But what gives a company a right to come here and take 20 or 30 megawatts of power, which we've been trying to save over the last 30 years in conservation efforts, for algorithms? And for the benefit of a few people who, as I understand it, find a way of evading taxes and everything else because they can schlep these currency issues back and forth? For me, it's a social and equity justice thing, more than it is how to regulate it and how to control it. But I'm very sad that for a very, very small handful of jobs, we are giving up an enormous amount of energy to one company that produces, that consumes more energy than we ever have consumed in this part of Montana. For what? For a few jobs? I mean, you could argue that the sawmill that was out there before at least had 800 jobs at one time, and they consumed a fraction of the energy that this one company is consuming. So the bigger picture for me is not how to regulate it, but how do you find the way for social justice? Because frankly, everybody else that's got that light bulb by their chair, guess who's going to pay for this company to consume way more than their fair share? We all will. Whether it's peaking power facilities that are built in Northwestern Energies, or the Tribe, or whoever is going to be providing an inordinate amount of kilowatt-hours for this one company, just think about the fairness and justice and equity issue for the rest of us, because we will most assuredly be paying more for this company and its small handful of jobs to move in here and consume more, far more than their fair share of consumption for a product which most of us can't describe or know about anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loken. Come on up.
My name is Elaine Nagel, and I have said my opinion before, but I would like to add to it that, as being a lifelong resident of the Bonner area, when I first noticed the noise pollution, I didn't have a clue what all was involved. I do now, I've had quite an education, thank you, and there's so much more to understand and learn. I really think option one would be the best at this point in time, because I'll leave you with a very old adage: An ounce of prevention is worth more than a pound of cure.
Thank you. Is there any additional? Yes, come on up.
Katrina Thornis, for the record. I really did not want to come up here today, but I think it's important to speak when the chance is provided. We have a decision to make. There are two options. I would implore the county commissioners to please consider the precautionary principle when making their decision, to just read a basic definition for anybody who might need their recollection refreshed. It's a principle that the introduction of a new product or process whose ultimate effects are disputed or unknown should be resisted. Moving forward, we don't necessarily know what types of environmental justice cases might arise from choosing option two. Option one seems safer to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment today? Okay, last chance. Okay, seeing none. I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And before we get to questions or discussion by the commission, I had a conversation with John Hart earlier today in terms of just process-wise. If we were so inclined to choose option two, for instance, would tabling really be in order? And, because it struck me, we have no motion to place on the table. So, John, you had some thoughts as far as what a motion might look like in that scenario?
Yeah, Commissioner, I think you're right there. There isn't a motion to table. And so if you were to consider option number two, what I would suggest is that you make a motion declining to adopt interim zoning, and then instead directing staff to investigate the feasibility of addressing some of these impacts of concern as they proposed in their staff report.
Okay, thank you. And I guess conversely, one and two would not necessarily be mutually exclusive from the standpoint that you could, in theory, adopt interim zoning as outlined in option one, and at the same time, move immediately into investigating impacts such as are delineated in option two. So questions or discussion by the commission?
First, I'd like to thank the public for their involvement, both in June and in the interim and today. I especially like to thank Jenny and Diana. I know other staff have been involved, but the two of you have done a great job, I think, of doing the research, even coming up with what are the question we're trying to answer. I like that on, seeing that on the screen, and looking at whether interim zoning is the appropriate tool to use, and if, as Mr. Bowditch said, you know, is there an emergency that needs to be addressed? I also really appreciate the presentation that both of you did, but the, it's a confusing topic to understand. And until Diana gave us a briefing of her presentation a few weeks ago, and until then, I always just called it electronic monopoly money, because I couldn't understand it at all. So understanding that the ledger and the private and the public and blockchain and all that stuff is really helpful. I laughed as I looked at the bottom of one of your slides that came from Blockchain for Dummies, so we all got that today. I think we all agree that it kind of goes against our grain to see such an incredible use of energy for something that we can't put our hands on. But I really think that in the end, I don't think that zoning is the right tool. Maybe there'll be some zoning that comes out of option two, but I think that we're better off to take a more global look, because this probably isn't the only industry that produces noise, that has e-waste. I agree that we should be looking at what do we do with waste. I'm sure all of you see things that come across the internet of, like, how do you recycle plastic and make it into something new? I am always baffled at the fact that we can't even figure out how to recycle glass in Montana. I think the other thing, when we talk about what other communities, other places are doing, when it's a community, or like in eastern Washington, they have energy districts and different things. I mean, I think part of the investigation is what authorities do we have, and are there some authorities we need? Because counties are a general powers government. We do not have near the authority that a city does, and we don't have the authorities that place some other states, counties in other states have. So, and even if we did adopt energy or interim zoning, the county really has no authority on related to energy use or the source of that energy. And maybe there's some, you know, it might be something we need to ask the legislature for power to do, but, so I really think that option two is the best, because it helps us look more globally and not just focus on that one industry. I also think that the industry themselves have, you know, they're taking on a challenge themselves to decide whether, is this the future, or is it all going to go to blockchain? And can you convert to that? And that's, you know, something they're going to have to figure out in their own work. So I am in support of option number two and not adopting interim zoning at this time.
So is that a motion?
Sure. I can make it better stated, probably. I would move that the Board of County Commissioners decline to adopt emergency interim zoning and direct staff to investigate the development of regulations to target impacts of concern such as noise, e-waste, and energy created by various types of commercial and industrial uses.
Thank you.
I will second that. Did you want to say something, or should I?
No, go ahead.
Sorry. With my second, you know, I think it should, I feel like I have to say, I really dislike the proof-of-work and the mining consensus mechanism. I really do. And I agree with everything negative that has been said about it on philosophical and logistical levels. But fortunately, I don't think we really have the luxury to be so myopic and fear-driven in our decision-making process. I love that utilities are looking at regulating this and are passing moratoriums. I think that's fantastic, because they are the regulators and the keepers of energy use, them along with the PSC in the state of Montana. It is not the county that really has the authority. It's not in our regulatory lane to regulate energy. So I'm looking forward to seeing what we can do in that arena and moving to do something about that, but currently, regulating energy is not something that's in our lane. One common kind of theme in all of the public comments that we received, a lot of them, 92% or something, you know, was basically the ban Bitcoin, which I think, after hearing Diana's explanation and hearing all the public comment and people in the industry, we can agree, is a gross oversimplification of the situation and of our regulatory abilities. I think we need to keep in mind that we didn't see this coming. Nobody, two years ago, said, "All these energy-intensive, loud warehouse things are coming to Missoula, and we should prepare and go through an entire process to pass zoning to protect ourselves from this." We didn't see it coming. And there are other things that we're not going to see coming. And so I think we need to keep in mind that we need a broader application of protections, and those are provided by moving forward with option two and addressing the issues more globally for the next thing that's going to come that we aren't anticipating. And so I find number two to be less reactionary and a more thoughtful approach that is consistent with a problem-solving paradigm, and I look forward to working with our community partners like Climate Smart Missoula and Home Resource and everyone else to get the right input on that, as well as working with our legislature. We have a legislative session coming up, and we've heard things like, "We're the only state without regulations around waste." Maybe we can do something about that at the legislative level. So essentially, I think, in order to enact interim zoning, there has to be an imminent threat to public health and safety. And then we would research in that year, that year moratorium is for us to research what we're going to do about it. Well, what we're going to do about it is number two, because that's really all we can do with our current authorities and as a long-term solution. After that year is over, it's over, and what will we have done? And really, we would be investigating and enacting what we can do within our current authorities as a long-term solution. So I feel that banning one industry, and it's not even a whole industry, it's one sub-methodological category of an industry, is unnecessary and unwise. And so that's why I support option number two.
Thank you, Commissioner Rowley. So I completely empathize with the precautionary principle as something to embrace when it comes to possible threats to human health or safety. At the same time, something that we heard in the last public hearing, and I think maybe not in so many words, but it has been brought up here today, is interim zoning, as applied to cryptocurrency mining, kind of a blunt instrument to get at what really are more fine-grained impacts. Because I think what we're really talking about are the impacts themselves, not necessarily cryptocurrency mining, or cryptocurrency as an industry, but what we're experiencing in our community: noise, the possibility for e-waste, possible excessive use of energy, and what is a real threat to our globe: climate change. So how do we get at those? And is cryptocurrency mining really the target that we ought to be going at? And maybe we need, in some sense, a much broader approach, because that is potentially too myopic. I do have serious concerns about energy use in cryptocurrency mining or public proof-of-work blockchain operations. And even though, to their credit, HyperBlock is drawing upon hydro power, I had the opportunity here recently to tour a cryptocurrency mining operation, CryptoWad in Butte, and they are, they use a lot of power, or will be, as they ramp up, and they're getting their power from coal strip. So there clearly is the, not just the possible, but the very real situation in the state of Montana that will be enlarging our carbon footprint rather than decreasing it. The other thing I would say, and I guess I'll say right out of the chute here, that I am inclined to support the motion and immediately roll into looking at how we might, from a regulatory standpoint, address some of these impacts of concern, because about four or five months have elapsed now, while we've been taking a very deliberate process, looking at this and trying to understand even the terminology involved in what is creating these impacts via cryptocurrency mining. So the case that we would need to make, like, right today, is that there is an imminent threat that would not be addressed if we don't take interim zoning procedures or steps. So I would say all of that with the caveat that by adopting option two or the motion that Commissioner Curtis made, this does not foreclose the future possibility of interim zoning. If, at such a point in time, we determine that there is an imminent threat and that the only way to provide some threat, and that the only way to provide some space for us to get our hands around it would be to take the more extreme measure of putting a stop to a specific use or a specific enlarged use of an existing industry. So with that, any additional discussion on the part of the commission?
Just one.
Commissioner?
I'd also hope that through this process, we talked about, Commissioner Rowley mentioned some folks to involve, but I also think involving the folks in this business is really important, because as we look at the impacts, we need to look for solutions. And it could be wind, and it could be solar, and it could be some other ways to generate electricity also. So we'll be creative and look at all the stuff here.
And I would also be remiss not also to thank both Jenny and Diana for their work on this issue, and all of you on both sides of the issue in the audience here. I think you've all given us some good food for thought, and we'll carry that all forward as we look at the potential of developing regulations, which might end up being some form of zoning regulations countywide, or possibly other remedies also. So we've had a motion seconded, we've had discussion. Let's go ahead and vote. All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So I guess, as I mentioned earlier, Jenny and Diana, give some thought to how this might fit into your work plan and how we might expedite the discussion, because I don't think it's any less of an urgent need today than it was four months ago when we first started looking at it. So, okay. Is there any other business coming before the commission at this time? Seeing none, we'll be adjourned. Thank you.